Good evening, everyone, as we call this meeting to order. Mr. Kern, can you call the rule, please?
Mr. Melody?
Here.
Mr. Weininger?
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. Harris will be a little late, and Mr. Valentine could not make it this evening.
No. So does regret. Thank you. Mr. Anders, could you lead us in the pledge today since you were looking straight at?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sure. A second?
Call the rule, please.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
And Mrs. May?
Yes, motion passes. Dr. Marshhausen?
Okay. Mrs. May, members of the board, for our COVID update, which we have committed to doing every board meeting, over the last two weeks, there have been some changes, and one was just announced today. In collaboration with the Department of Health and the Governor's Office, several superintendents statewide have been working to get the state's quarantine procedures in line with recent changes due to the Ohio General Assembly. And today, the Ohio Department of Health released new guidelines that allow us to stay compliant with that new law related to vaccines and vaccines that have yet to be fully FDA-approved. So the state policy, which is in effect as of now, is mask to stay, test to play. An under-mask-to-stay-test-to-play, a student who is in direct contact in a school setting or at a school event may remain in school as long as they are masked and symptom-free. And that student will be able to continue to come to school as long as they wear that mask in the school setting. The test-to-play portion is if one of those students is an athlete or involved in interscholastic athletics, the student has to take a test on the first day that they are in direct contact. If that test comes back negative, that student can continue to participate in interscholastic athletics. And they will then again be tested on the fifth, sixth, or seventh day, at which point they would be considered out of that modified quarantine. What this means for us in future board reports, and when we look at that dashboard that we post twice a week, I would anticipate seeing increases in our modified quarantines as the students who fall under this new guidance would be considered to be in modified quarantines. As Dr. Vanderhoff said today and said with several of us last week on a number of different phone calls, we just continue to learn, and COVID isn't going away, and we're going to continue to learn from the science. And this change is in part due to a pilot program that was initiated in Warren County by the Warren County Area Health Department. And over the past month or so, school districts in Warren County have been using the mask policy and this testing policy. And as superintendent statewide, our concern has been that 98% of the students who we quarantine are simply just staying home, and they do not develop COVID-19. So this is something that has been grounded in science, has been learned over the past several months as we've been back in school. And I think it's what we will see as a school district and as schools across Ohio, is continued amendment and adjustments made to the procedures as we learn how to safely keep students in school. Been involved in several conversations where there's the discussion, when does this move from a pandemic to an endemic? Meaning it's just something that we live with. And so this is where we are as of today. We're working with the Ohio Department of Health. Chris Anders has been in contact with them today to try to get some of the professional test kits that we would be able to use for our athletes with the support of our nurses and our athletic trainers to make this a little bit easier on moms and dads for those middle school and high school athletes who may be close contacts. We are prepared, knowing that as we move inside, as we begin wrestling, as we enter some of our winter sports, we're going to have to be mindful of where our kids are and what the numbers say and what we're doing. At the same time, I am also happy to share that our conversations with Governor DeWine's office and his staff, and potentially a partnership with folks at Kroger, once the FDA gives this emergency use authorization for five- to 11-year-olds, which is anticipated the middle of next week, both the Biden administration and the DeWine administration are making plans for immediate setup of vaccination clinics for those elementary-age students. We are hopeful that we would be able to host one of those clinics in the Dublin city schools. It would, of course, be a parent choice. I do not anticipate recommending to the board any mandates for vaccinations. But if parents chose, and we can make it easier for parents to get those vaccines at school, that's what we would want to be able to do. We currently offer vaccinations during the school day to students in some of our elementary, middle, and high schools. And if permissible and parents chose, it would be my hope that we could offer COVID vaccinations during the school day, if that's what a parent wanted to be able to do. I would also hope to be able to extend those clinics into the afternoons and evenings. So if a parent wanted to be with their child, that they could also choose to do that. So again, parent choice, if we can make it easier for them and more convenient for them as a family, that's what we would want to be able to do. Are there any questions from the board on either of these two new developments as we, as a team, have spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks working on both of these? Hearing no questions, our numbers where we are today, our mask exemptions have not changed significantly. When I talk to Mr. Gill, who sees these, you make it two who withdraw the mask exemption, two who add to the mask exemption, this number has remained fairly steady since the end of September. When we look at our current case count, we currently have nine staff members and 54 students who are COVID-positive at this time. You'll notice two elementaries, that numbers are a little bit higher. A portion of both of those numbers are due to one situation in one classroom in each of those buildings. These numbers are the lowest that they've been in any of the reports since we've started giving these reports, and mirror what we're seeing in our case count for both the seven-day average and the 14-day average in the school district and in Franklin County. Our quarantines, we have 65 students who were on traditional quarantine. I would imagine and would predict these numbers would change as we now have a new policy from the Ohio Department of Health. And as we look at these modified quarantines, I would anticipate these modified quarantines increasing specifically at the elementary level as we implement the new Ohio Department of Health numbers. So any questions on our COVID update at this point? I will be meeting with our medical advisory committee later this week, and we will be looking at the new guidance, we will be looking at our numbers, and we will be having conversations about where would we need to be to lift the mask mandate for elementary students? What's the number in terms of cases per 100,000 in the area for that? Also, what will the impact of potential vaccinations be when we start looking at that? Is there a number or a percentage of students that we would consider lifting that mask mandate following the vaccinations? So in either of those cases, we are probably looking at sometime in December, if not when we come back after the winter holidays. Okay? At this point, I would like to invite Jessica, oh, sorry, nope, wrong presentation, Jeff Stark to come up as we... Welcome, Mr. Harris.
Sorry.
Mr. Stark, I'm going to give you this clicker for your portion of the presentation.
Good evening. Appreciate this, Mr. Make sure. Over there. There we go. And you're trusting me to build buildings. Well, thank you for this time tonight. We have, you know, we always have a lot going on in operations, and always a lot of projects going on, but we're really at the beginning, at the cusp of doing major work at three of our high schools all around the same time. So this really gives us an opportunity right now to tell you what's going on, and we'll start with Jerome. We have, again, we have projects at Jerome, Sciota, and Kaufman, and all of them are pretty material. Jerome is the largest, this is the tent pole. So a couple of board meetings ago, I asked the board for approval for additional modulators. So as you know, the rate of growth at Jerome hit us all a bit of a surprise. The housing boom that's gone up there was way more than was even professionally forecasted to us. And because of that, Jerome's modulators, which currently they have eight classrooms out there, we're going to be increasing it by an additional 12. So this is the very first step, but it is a literal temporary step, because as you're going to see later on, we're going to talk about additions, which is a more permanent step. But as far as the modulators go, our plan, we already have someone, we did an RFP, we have a modular builder, EMD Construction. We have submitted all the documents to the City of Dublin. The City of Dublin has been very, very collaborative and cooperative with on this. Typically, you can't get on their zoning schedule for months, they understand the urgency of this, and will be going in front of their zoning committee on November 16th. And that is basically to approve this, and this is the placement of where we're putting it. So what you can see here is that we're placing these modulators right next to the current modulators, which was approved by zoning back five and a half, six years ago. So it's already something that was approved, this is another step that we do to explain that this is temporary. Dr. Marshhausen actually sent the city a formal letter committing that this will only be for one school year. In the past, people questioned that, but this is literally for one school year. And while these are being built, we're going to be talking about additions. So again, the modulators will start, we plan on starting, as soon as we get zoning approval, we'll start working, we hope to break ground sometime in December, January, to get those modulators built, we like to get them built ahead of time. But while those are going on, we want to start with the Jerome High School addition. So Jerome has a couple of places that we can put an addition on, and that'll be part of this. And we've put together a team, so while operations leads the charge in making sure things get built, we do not lead the charge in what the design should look like. For that, we have graciously gotten the time of our Deputy Superintendent John Chwankey, our Director of Leadership, Mike Oren, Director of Student Operations, Tom McDonald, and of course, the Principal of Jerome, Mike Oren. They will be involved with all the meetings about what we need, how many classrooms do we need, what type of classrooms should they be. We're also looking for this addition to increase our common area space, because, you know, as the school grows, the cafeteria was only built for so many. So part of this is going to be that as well. So these meetings will actually start to take place next week, pending board approval tonight of this contract that we're going to talk about Moody and Nolan and Perkins and Will. And those meetings for design should end at the end of January. And from that time, we should have the design done, and then I'll go, they'll start putting together all the architectural drawings from there. We will be coming to the board later this year, we're hoping to do it by this calendar year, for you to approve a construction manager at risk, that's called a CMR. And what a CMR is, it's something that is, it's regulated how we bid that, and we'll work with legal counsel on doing that. And we'll want to get the contractor on board as early as possible. We typically wait to get the contractor on board until we have the designer on board. We like to do that because it's more collaborative that way. Typically, some might get both at the same time, sometimes you get a little conflict while doing that, and we're looking for a process that's under a great amount of speed. So when you have to work fast, you want less conflict, the better. So we'll be putting that out later this year. Sciota, so you'll see Sciota's design start TBD. We plan on doing a few things at Sciota, but right now, we're going to be probably focusing on them in the spring. The urgency right now is at Jerome. We need to, we've committed to the city that these monitors only be a year. The students are here and more are coming, and we just don't have the space. So we're putting all efforts towards Jerome right now on the design. But once that design is done, and once construction begins to start, we're going to start focusing on Sciota, and there's two or three different projects that we're looking at over there. And at that point, we're going to put together the same academic team, but this time, Principal Bob Scott will join in and put together that. So that's more to follow on what we're going to be doing over at Sciota. Later tonight, I'll be asking approval for Moody, Nolan, and Perkins and Will, and they're the design firm that we've chosen for the addition. So how we choose design firms is what we call an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. And that is an Ohio revised code, by Ohio revised code, how we competitively choose architects or designers. So we put this out there, and Moody, Nolan, Perkins, and Will, we felt was the most qualified for this project. Moody Nolan is based here out of Columbus, and anyone who knows Columbus or in the design world, Moody Nolan has a gold standard name, they've been around for a long time, they've done a lot of projects, both private and public, and they really are a remarkable name. And Perkins and Will, based out of Chicago. And typically, you don't have two architects pumped together, but they have a very unique approach where they almost, they maximize creativity and they maximize efficiency all at one time, and they really seem to have a good partnership. Most recently, their partnership is what developed the New Upper Arlington High School, which has really some really cutting-edge ways of looking at things and also some very efficient ways. So we're very impressed by that, and they also have a very, very good portfolio. So later tonight, we will be asking for approval for Perkins and Will and Moody Nolan together. Mark Ford, Ford and Associates, so that's a name the board might be familiar with. So Mark Ford first came into the Dublin universe when we had to get this building, Emerald Campus, past zoning. So if you remember, when we bought this building, it was not zoned for education, and Mark was an architect who, you know, Mark is not a school architect. Mark Ford and Associates, very well-known, they do a lot of business with OSU, they do a lot of business with Amazon, they build shopping centers, Mark's very well-known in the community. He's very well-known in Dublin, too, he's done a lot of work here in Dublin. And he really understands Dublin's codes, Dublin's requirements, the process, and he has acted as our owner's representation on the preschool, on both elementaries and the middle school. He has been, he really, his skill set of an architect and knowing the code really complements our internal skill set of the folks we have who really understand construction management. And what Mark does is he reviews, he reviews not only what the architect does, but he reviews a lot of change orders, he'll review project design bulletins and punch lists, but also when we do get into a bit of a tie with some type of code requirement where it needs some creativity, Mark has really, really shown what he can do there. So that will be in front of the board tonight. What Mark's scope will be right now is just the Jerome modulators, which we really don't expect much there, except if we do fall into some type of code thing, again, we need a lot of speed to get these things done, so we wanted Mark's guidance on that. But Mark will also be instrumental in the building of the Jerome addition. So Kaufman, so we talked about Jerome, we talked about Sciota, and now Kaufman. So this picture here, this is what we call, this is the building envelope per se, it's the exterior of Kaufman, these are just a few shots. And you can see the paneling system, and you can see that paneling system is a little, this is, this project is 42 years in the making, because that's about how old most of that paneling is. And we don't know what's behind that paneling, we have a good idea, but we don't know, it's just like when you do a project at home, you know, you got to tear it off and see what's there. But this is a very, very ambitious project, and you will see that the timeline, we don't expect this project to be complete until 2024. And that is because we're going to be looking at replacing all of the paneling, replacing just about all of the windows, and again, this is well past end of life. And probably not replacing, but sure tuck pointing a lot of the brick in a lot of the areas. And this isn't a project you can do over the summer, you know, we have 10 weeks every summer, and while school's off, operations isn't, we have a number of projects that we have 10 weeks to get done, tick, tick, the clock's ticking. This cannot be done over a summer. So we're going to have to come up with a very creative schedule, and we're going to very closely work with Principal Matt Perrell and his team, because this will have to be done during the school year. It will not put anyone at any safety risk, we'll assure of that, but we're going to have to move slowly on this and little by little get this done. So we're partnering with CTL engineers on this. CTL engineering is another really gold standard name. We've used CTL on a lot of different projects. We also got CTL through the request for qualifications process, a lot of different people put in for it, CTL. This exterior-type work is something that they've done before, quite a bit before. And we know, working with them on a lot of our projects, on a lot of our PI projects, they did a real nice job. And they work well with the City of Dublin, and they understand our school district, and they just, they're a really impressive team, so that'll be later tonight. And before we go, goes back to Dr. Marshhausen, I would ask the board if there's any questions. I know I went through that fairly quickly, but...
Yes, if we could have Brian remind our public how this is being paid for and that it's already approved, could you go through that, please?
Yeah, so this is part of the 2018 operating bond and PI, one ballot issue. This is part of the $195 million bond issue, which we've mentioned several times, we have not issued the debt for these projects yet. So no interest has been paid, no money sitting out there. But that project, as a reminder, too, of that ballot issue, the Jerome additions was as part of what we say we're going to use those monies for. So as the pandemic slowed things down a little bit, but the building and houses and the students still came, so. But that, you know, that whole ballot issue is these additions, also the two new elementaries, to middle school and the preschool conversion, and also some renovations of this building, too. So a lot, a lot of use put to work for that ballot issue, and just a reminder, there's no new mileage ballot issue, so no increase in taxes, we're able to stay the same for the rate, so.
Thank you.
Along with the PI, too, both of them are now new mileage, so.
Anybody else?
I just want to make one comment, knowing the price tag for Arlington's new high school, we are very appreciative that we can do these corrections to Dublin Kaufman to prevent us from having to build another high school. Replace that high school, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
And when we talk about land acquisition, Jeff laid out the timeline for what we're doing, and there are really three parts to what we need to do to deal with and to handle the growth up in our northwest quadrant. The crisis situation is our modular. So in a crisis mode, we're going to add those 12 classrooms. Right now, we have classes being taught in hallways at Jerome. The short-term fix is the addition on Jerome, and that addition on Jerome fulfills the promise from 2018. And then we anticipate in 2023, having conversations about what is the ideal size of a high school? Because we start to get Jerome and potentially Kaufman both back over 2,000, with Jerome with the potential to get significantly over 2,000 students. So there was a plan that would have involved redistricting and shifting some students from the Jerome and Kaufman attendance areas over to Sciota, which doesn't have room to hold 500 additional students anyway. What we're doing now is saying we can hold tight with our current attendance boundaries for our high schools. This plan allows us to put the addition on Jerome and meet the needs right now of the students who are coming to Jerome High School. We're due to get new enrollment projections in early January, which will give us another peak forward. Those new enrollment projections will include the newly approved number of homes from Union County into the Jerome Village area. That number of newly approved homes continues to increase in our Jerome Township and Union County areas. I would anticipate a in-depth community conversation. First of all, what is the ideal size of a high school? And it's a conversation that we need to have. If the ideal size of a high school is in the 1,500, 1,600, 1,700 range, then we would be likely looking at a fourth high school. If the ideal size of a high school is in the 2,000 to 2,200 range, we're looking at additions onto Kaufman and Sciota and redistricting high schools based on that. So it's not a John decision, it's not a school board decision, it will ultimately be a community conversation, and then we will have to, as a leadership team, have an issue for the community to vote on, and it will be a community decision as to the direction that we want to go. In the meantime, there have been times that the district has been able to acquire land under favorable conditions, or to put an option on a piece of land for, in the event that it was necessary for the school. And one of the things that we are looking at right now is, in our northwest quadrant, where is there a piece of property that's 85 to 100 acres, that's not owned by a developer who's trying to put homes on it? In the event that we did choose to build the fourth high school, you got to have, you're going to have to have a place to put it in the area that you needed. So we're not actively looking to purchase land, but we are actively looking to see where are parcels of property. Just this past April, we purchased 15 additional acres next to Jerome High School. It was a piece of property that came available to the district, it was at a great cost, gives us a lot of flexibility if we need another elementary there, if we need to do other things in that area, so we were able to have that piece of property. Mr. Kern, correct me if I'm wrong, the site that Hopewell Elementary is on right now is a piece of property the district owned for decades.
Yeah, correct.
So there is some benefit to being able to acquire property so that when the need comes, you're able to get with folks like Mr. Stark before you go on the ballot and say, what would the building look like? How would, how would we configure it and get some of that stuff going? Mr. Kern, anything else for the land acquisition, or just the fact that we want the community to know? We have our eyes open, and we're looking to see what's available.
One thing we discussed with that, too, is I was formerly treasurer at Olin TNG, and they had, the Berlin High School had that for at least 10, 15 years beforehand. So just having that availability, we're thinking, hey, we'll never get to that point. This discussion that you're having, we never thought we'd have two years ago or three years ago, and so the discussion's there. So like you mentioned, it is very handy to have that on hand, and you mentioned, you know, if someone can't build houses on it, you can have that, too. So it's another availability there with that, so.
Any questions from the board on where we are with these projects, what we will be recommending later this evening? Okay? Mr. Ireland?
Good evening, thanks for letting me give you my Tolls update. Just, you have my packet in the board packet, and I've got a couple just points that I want to stress. Our current enrollment is continuing to hold strong, we're at 720 total students at Tolls, which 134 are Dublin students, which is, again, the highest that we've ever had for both of those categories. So we're excited, and the enrollment seems to be holding strong. We've started to work on some new programming for the next school year. One program that we just approved at our last board meeting that is going to be starting is named Unmanned Aviation Program, which basically drone program. So that's going to be a whole new program that's going to be offered next year at the school. We are looking to also modify our construction program. We're working in conjunction with Columbus State to add some additional capabilities of instruction in the more specified parts of construction, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, than what we're able to do at this point. So we're hoping to, in the next month or so, have that ironed out and be able to approve and have that construction program updated. We're also currently working on some middle school satellite programs to help in... We're also currently working on some middle school satellite programs to help in the areas of career awareness and career exposure, of different careers that students can get into after high school. So we're working with the different districts that serve Tolls and coming up with ways that we can do that in the middle schools to just, again, expose more students to Tolls and career education. And then finally, November 22nd, all the Dublin sophomores are going to be visiting Tolls to tour Tolls, see what we have to offer and so forth. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, and hopefully it'll be a good day for Dublin and Tolls. And that's all I wanted to point out. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Now for public participation for items on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and Jen Weber is first.
Good evening, my name is Jen Weber, I live at 4039 Killery Drive in Dublin, 43016. I looked through the agenda today, and I saw that there is going to be a policy proposal for weapons policies. And one of the policies under consideration by the board is labeled P O 3217. And the quote that concerned me the most was handguns in the possession of a person who has a valid concealed handgun license, or who is an active duty member of the armed forces with a valid military identification card and documentation of successful completion of firearms training if the handgun remains in a vehicle with the individual, or is left in a locked vehicle when the person exits the vehicle. That does not exactly agree with what the federal guidelines dictate. And I know in the state of Ohio, there's more leeway as far as firearms being present in school zones. And the phrasing of this new policy could be interpreted to allow concealed carry in our schools, including by 18-year-old students. With the amount of money being donated to certain school board candidates, and the fear-mongering messaging being floated around by conservative candidates, the possibility of having a school board in favor of allowing concealed carry in our schools is very real. Please clarify the language and the considered policy changes so that guns being carried in schools does not become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
Good evening, my name is Beth Chakowski, I live at 6420 Cook Road in Powell, Ohio, 43065. Dublin Board of Education members, thank you for the time this evening to speak about our property transfer request. Out of respect for your time and agenda, and since I was here in January with several exhibits with which to make our case, I will be succinct this evening in my comments. My husband and I again ask, on behalf of our children, that you please reconsider our property transfer requests from Buckeye Valley to Dublin schools. To update you on the status of our request, we had a hearing in February of this year, which both your legal counsel and Buckeye Valley's legal counsel attended. Following those proceedings, the state-appointed hearing officer stated in his report that the criteria to determine the present and ultimate good of the pupils concerned were meant for approval of the transfer. However, based on this board's resolution passed on January 7th denying the request based on vacant land in our development, the hearing officer denied our request. Through legal counsel, we appealed that ruling to the State Board of Education. Last month, the State Board overruled the hearing officer and ruled in favor of the transfer, accepting and agreeing with the hearing officer's finding that the transfer would serve the present and ultimate good of all students involved. As a reminder, the primary reason for our request is the distance to and from the schools. From our home on Cook Road, which is surrounded in three directions by Dublin school borders, the distance to Buckeye Valley Elementary is six miles compared to less than two miles to Eli Penny, and over 15 miles to the Buckeye Valley Middle and High Schools compared to less than five for Jerome. We worry not only about the safety of the commute for our children, but also how that commute time impacts their total well-being and the ability to participate in extracurriculars when the time comes. We acknowledge the concern that approving our request could lead to others to also request a transfer, but anecdotal and historical data does not support that concern. In our development of seven homes, none of which are vacant, the current residents are not interested in making the transfer largely for tax reasons. Additionally, historically of the 14 requests that have been made for transfer since 2015 in the state of Ohio, only six were approved by the state and accepted by the receiving district. None of those six are from the same district, demonstrating that one approval does not cause a landslide of requests. The Dublin difference calls for improving in everything Dublin schools does. This means righting the wrong and approving a lawful, beneficial-to-the-student, state-approved transfer that was previously denied on inaccurate grounds. The Dublin difference requires reconsideration for approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hey, folks. Just some technical items I noticed on the policies, and I'm aware there's a policy section coming up, so you might have already covered this. In 5410 and 5464, there's a recommendation for deletion of those. And there's a footnote at the top of 5410 stating that everything in it is covered by 5408. Two pieces, 5464, the accelerated graduation piece is kind of covered. I think the language in 5408 needs to be reviewed a little bit to make sure that it's adequate, otherwise it would appear that accelerated graduation is not available. And I don't think that was the intent, since 5408 is about acceleration. The more concerning piece is that 5410, proposed to be deleted, covers retention, AKA holding kids back that need a little bit more help. And as someone who's here championing just pure academic excellence, some of these kids do need to be held back, and I don't mean that in a negative way. They need the extra help, they need the extra time with the curriculum so they can master that minimum set of criteria to graduate. A year held back early can put kids directly on the right course for a profitable graduation and subsequent life. So take another look at the gaps in 5408 as they relate to 5410, because it does not seem to fully cover the piece that is being deleted around retention. Otherwise, we're going to have to have a conversation about how do we keep holding kids back a viable path for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Marshals?
Okay, a couple things to cover. One, just to make the board aware, and I would be happy to get any advice from our board members. Policy 5111 is non-resident eligibility for tuition-free education. And under 5411, if someone is building a home, and under Ohio law as well as our policy, they're entitled to 90 calendar days from when their students enroll in the schools to when they have to have moved into that home. And our practice in Dublin has been that we collect one month's tuition when they do that, which is refunded then when they move into the home. Well, due to housing delays right now, of the approximately 80 families for whom we've done this with, we have 18 current families who are, looks like are going to be unable to move into their home by November 15th, considering we started around April 15th. There have been some calls and some pressure on state legislators. I empathize with the folks who plan to be in their home by Thanksgiving with promise from contractors, but due to supply shortages and so forth, they're not able to be in their home. At the same time, I understand that we all pay very high taxes in the Dublin City School District, and to be attending the Dublin City Schools does have a cost, and if you're not part of the tax base, there's also that issue. So from a board perspective, I do not have the authority to unilaterally suspend that board policy or extend that date. You do. I would be happy to put that on the next board agenda, if that is what this board desires. I am also happy to start collecting the tuition for those families if they choose to stay in the Dublin City School District. I will tell you that there are a handful of families who, when they saw this coming, got apartments and moved their families into apartments so their kids could come to the Dublin City School District. It's a desired place to have your children. So this is one of those times that I'm open to conversation, and to take your direction, and it is fixable on November 15th, if you would like to suspend that policy for two months or whatever duration you would like.
Do we have an idea how long we need an extension for for these families?
No, and we ran into this, and we have a whole bunch of families who are internal Dublin families, but for that, it's not a big deal because they're already in the Dublin schools, they're paying taxes. In essence, it's an inter-district transfer where they're probably right now at Dep and Eversall, but mom and dad are driving them to Dep and Eversall because their house wasn't finished. We have no idea, and I'm looking at Jen who's shaking her head too, we have no idea, you know, is it reasonable to say we'll give two more months, but if you're not in by January 15th, is that reasonable? If I were going to make a recommendation to the board, my recommendation would be in this extending circumstance, due to construction delays, can we suspend that portion of 5111 for two months? And say if you're not in by January 15th, then you'll have to pay that tuition. Just keeping in mind too, that we don't set the tuition. The tuition from the state of Ohio is $1,393. So it's not crazy.
Is that per month?
Per month.
Yeah.
Is there any precedence for this that you have found, either our board or other boards of education?
No, the 90 days is new, but no, I do not know of any precedents of this.
Is there any middle ground where we might charge them tuition, but put it in escrow, and then if they do end up moving in, refund that money just as we would refund the one month, you know, if it took them three months, you know, just in this one case?
I have to check with legal. I know that we don't have a lot of options around tuition, except by the state of Ohio, districts have looked at tuition versus open enrollment as an option, and it's not an option, because I have experience in those areas, and it's not an option to charge tuition versus open enrollment in a different amount. Mr. Kern, you agree?
Yes, yes, I agree.
And given the supply chain issues that we're having in the United States and around the world, you know, if we extended one month, two months, you know, we could end up having to extend it six months or even a year based on when they might get supplies, or?
I think what we could do is to say, we're extending it two months, and you have to make a decision then. If you're not going to be in and you can't afford the tuition, your child at the semester could return to their district of residence to complete the school year, or you'll have to pay the tuition to complete the school year. So I think we would give people a little bit more time if we were to provide some cushion or flexibility.
Are you asking for direction now?
Yeah, I'm asking, you know, in my report with the board, it's a time for a conversation. What would you like me to do? Absent direction from the board, I will enforce the board policy.
I personally, being on the policy committee, would like to see the options laid out succinctly.
Okay. We could amend policy without a first reading and a second reading, if need be. So if you'd like to see a couple options, I can have a couple options at the next meeting. What other information would you like from me and our team when you make those considerations?
I would also like to know the specific number of families or students that would be impacted by this proposed extension. I assume that it would be only the people that would kind of start at the beginning of the year, it's not going to be rolling, you know, if I come in tomorrow and say, you know, I want to do that, it's going to be 90 days for someone that comes in tomorrow, not five months or whatever.
Yes. And we probably also have the capacity in our welcome centers, enrollment has somewhat slowed down to Mr. Melody getting anticipated dates from whatever builders have told those families to. So we could probably ask, and I'm getting a nod yes, we could ask those 18 families, if we gave you until January, does that get you to the finish line? And if not, you know, what options do we have? You know, just so that they knew. So I'll get that information for you at the next meeting.
Actually, if we don't have the information until the next meeting, you know, and the deadline is the 15th, that's pretty much on target. Can we get it in a weekly update?
I can get you the information ahead of time.
Yeah.
And then we could withdraw an item on the agenda, or you could vote down an item on the agenda if we put on there that we were going to temporarily suspend the policy and you didn't want to.
We don't. That works for me, thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you to our policy committee and to Janet for the work that they do to get policies ready. Our General Assembly has made this incredibly difficult, and it gets more difficult every year with the number of education-related laws and the complexity of those laws without full hearing schedules. It's, the unintended consequences are significant, and I know that our policy groups spend a lot of time, and our legal team spends a lot of time looking at all of the policies that come, and I'd like to thank our committee. Stu and Lynn, thank you for your service and the work that Neola does. The past couple weeks, we have dealt with a couple of threat situations at our high schools. And with that, we've had some questions about what does it mean when we've determined that something is not a credible threat? And I'd like the board and the community to know that our administrative team is not determining when something is a credible threat or not. That is done in partnership with our friends at Dublin Police Department, with the Columbus Police Department. And as someone who has witnessed this on both sides, in my tenure as a superintendent, I've had the misfortune of dealing with credible threats, and of watching what happens when a threat is credible, and how local police, FBI, Homeland Security, Joint Terrorism Task Force come together and deal with credible threats. Our parents need to know that when something has been investigated by our police department, it usually involves home visits, it includes weapons checks, it involves, in some cases, searches of homes when we determine and when they determine something isn't a credible threat. Obviously, all of those things can't be shared with the public. Obviously, in specific situations, we can't name the names of kids and things that our police have done with and in cooperation with the Columbus Police, and then sometimes in collaboration and cooperation with the FBI. But it's not. But it's not Bob Scott at Toyota saying it's all safe. It's law enforcement at the highest level. And what makes this more difficult is when something's been investigated, then two weeks later, a picture resurfaces and somebody reposts it. And that comes up again. We encourage our students to follow, see something, say something. And every tip we get, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when it comes to us, it goes to the police. If it's something that involves weapons, if it's something involves threats and it's investigated at the moment that it's investigated. But some of the things that we've dealt with recently, both in and out of school, we just need our community to know. Our administration responds to discipline situations. Every discipline situation is investigated. If it's a threat, it's investigated in partnership with the police. And if it's something that isn't a threat, discipline or corrective action is given when appropriate. And that doesn't get posted on social media, what we do. So we just want our folks to know that it's a daily situation. Chuck Collier, who's here with us, is our conduit when necessary with our police department. I would say that Chief Pis and I talk multiple times a week. And nothing goes and nothing is taken lightly when it comes to our student safety. As we've already heard today, there's a property transfer resolution in our board agenda for today. And that property transfer resolution is there and you have also received as a board the update on where we are from legal counsel. That was sent on Friday to all of you with the updates on where we are with that. The next board meeting is November 15th and that's a change due to the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference, which is the Monday before. So we have moved to the 15th of November for our school board meeting and that meeting will be here and we anticipate returning to live streaming on November 15th of our meetings. And I do want to share some results from the Paul Fallon survey. These results, as well as the full slide deck, will be made available to the public when this video is put out and made available for the community. Four slides that I'd like to share specifically. And this is a survey that was done on September 13th through 18th. It is a survey with a margin of error of 4.56%. And for those of you who know Paul Fallon, and I think our board knows Paul Fallon well, he's, he's spot on when we've used him in the past. When asked, how would you rate the quality of education being provided by the Dublin City School District? 80% of the community had a very good or good rating for the school district, 9% fair, only 3% were dissatisfied with the level of education being provided to the school district. This number is a little lower, as you can see in the breakout in 2018, that was 85% versus 80%. It is close to the margin of error, but when you look at the political climate and environment in which we are living today, 80% overall positive rating is extraordinary. When you look at parents, that's up to 86% of our parents have an overall positive impression of the job that we're doing in the Dublin City School District. When you look at our teachers and rating our teachers, again, 72% have a very good or good rating, only 2% have a poor or very poor rating. When you look at parents on here, it's 86% of parents have a positive impression, good or very good, of our teachers. Our teachers are amazing. Our teachers get it done every day in our classrooms. They have been the rock stars during a pandemic and the glue that have kept the work that we're doing rolling during this time. And we are so grateful for the work that our teachers do in our classroom each and every day. When you look at managing our finances, 61% overall approval rating with only an 8% negative rating. This number, again, within the margin of error from 2018. When, when Paul Fallon came this morning and spoke to our cabinet and shared this data, Paul said without any hesitation whatsoever that he works with school districts across the country and this is one of the best surveys and one of the best support for a school district he sees nationwide. And that has a lot to do with our teachers and this has a lot to do with Mr. Kern and his department and the job that we do managing finances, stretching the levy from 2018 to 2024, our, our open monthly treasurer's reports, all of our financial statements available to anyone on the, on our website. Great trust in how the district manages our finances. Whoops, and went too far there. Can you take me back one? Finally, we did a facilities contact, concept test and asked the question, do you, do you agree or disagree? Even though no one likes more taxes, it will be better for the community to build additional buildings and learning spaces rather than trying to meet capacity needs by resorting to more online classes or changing attendance boundaries. 51% of the community responded that they would rather see us add facilities than switch to more online classes, switch to different types of schedules or to change attendance boundaries. And you can see all the different breakdowns there on homeowners versus homeowners, Democrats versus Republicans, men versus women. So you can see the different breakdowns. Again, this will be available online. Our community is well aware of our growth. And when asked about our growth in another question, 60% of our community said the rate of growth is good. So we're aware of that. And so as we have conversations about potential buildings, it's important for us to know that it's at least a conversation our community is willing to have. Does anybody have any questions for me from the board? Oops. Apparently I skipped past one more, so let me go back. Oh, sorry. When asked, how would you rate the job that the Dublin City Schools have done meeting the needs of diverse cultures and backgrounds? 58% of our community had a good or very good rating of the job that we've done with diversity, equity and inclusivity. Only 6% of the community has concerns about the work we're doing in our DEI space and it grades us very poorly in that area. There's 17% who's fair and 19% who, who doesn't know. And when you look at the, the breakdown here, I guess it's important for us to know that 60% of these respondents are non-parents. So when you look at, there, there may be some, I had my senior citizens lunch today and some of those folks would say, I don't know, because they don't have kids in schools or grandkids in schools. But the vast majority of our community believes that the work that we're doing in the DEI space meets what they would like to see for us. So this polling data is extraordinary for us as a district. It points to the fact that the vast, vast majority of our parents are happy with the work that we're doing and the education that we're providing their students. Thank you, Mrs. May, for pointing out that I couldn't pass that. Any questions? Thank you.
Regarding the approval of resolution to reject proposed territory transfers. It is recommended by the superintendent, the Board of Education, approve the attached board resolution to reject the proposed territory transfer. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or thoughts? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weineger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Abstained.
And Mrs. May?
Yes. Motion is approved. Three, two, one, extension. Thank you. Mr. Kern?
Hold on one second. Okay, a little preview. Dr. Marshausen mentioned about the extension of our current 2018 levy, which we discussed with a couple of questions from Mr. Weineger. But on the November 15th agenda, we'll have the approval of the updated five-year forecast. As Dr. Marshausen mentioned, we do have extended, we have a positive balance actually through, just very slightly through fiscal, just a little preview here through fiscal year 26. So that is good news. That allows us there again to continue to stretch as the last time in 2018, that was the longest, was six years in between. So it'll definitely be against at least six years this time. So that is good news for everybody all around. On this evening's agenda, just a few small things. We have a transfer to close out the Kaufman class of 2021 and moves the remaining funds to the existing classes. Along with that, there's an approval of a student activity purpose class for the Kaufman class of 2025 as those freshmen come in. And there is some appropriation changes. Just noted too is some additional ESAR monies and this time is around specifically for special education, IEDEA grant and the IDEA preschool grant. So as a part of receiving that, we have been able to spend that, we have to appropriate it. So hence the appropriation change this evening. Are any questions on anything?
There is recommend by the, whoops. There is recommend about the treasurer that the Board of Education approve items 5B, approval of transfers 5C, approval of probation changes in 5D, approval of student activity purpose clause. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weineger?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes, motion passes forward to the room. Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. May and members of the board. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce Jessica Sullivan. Jessica is our data, our coordinator of data and assessment and she is here this evening to share a lot of data with you resulting from assessments we have had with our students last spring and early this year. And she's also going to talk about how we're going to use that data to plan our instruction going forward.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. Like Jen said, I, there's a lot of data, there's a lot of state testing. So I will try my best to keep it simple, although the state report card last year was quite complex as we move through testing during a pandemic. So again, thank you for letting me be here tonight. Like Jen said, I'll review the state report card and more importantly, I want to talk about some of our instructional focuses that the teaching and learning team in the other departments are focusing on this school year. Before I begin the presentation, I do, I would like to share that the state report card data is only one data point we look at as we reflect on the previous school year and identify some areas of strengths and of course, areas for growth as well. So as Dr. Marshausen said, our teachers are rock stars and sometimes when we only look at this state report card charts and we don't really understand what that means because of the complexity, we're missing part of the hard work that is going into it. All right. So the first part or the first component of the state report card is called achievement. And so what achievement does is it looks at the measurement of proficiency on state tests. This component is made up of two areas, the performance index and indicators. So performance index, and I'm not going to read this word for word to you guys, but this is looking at how our students perform on state assessments. So there's five performance levels that range from basic up to advanced. And it also takes into account our students who are untested during the state testing windows. So due to the pandemic, we saw a heightened number of students not participating in state tests and our average was 7.7% of our tests were uncompleted last year, which is state average of what we're seeing across the state as well. So like I said, the highest percentage possible is the advanced range and that has our highest percentage of students throughout the district. So although we had students who didn't participate, we're still performing in that advanced performance level higher than any other performance level. The indicators will be displayed over the next couple of slides and this is strictly looking at what percent of our students are performing proficient on each state assessment. So there are 21 indicators that we, that we give assessments in and last year we had seven of those. So the next couple of slides, I want to highlight a few pieces because this chart is, this data is pulled from the state report card and it's looking at how Dublin City Schools performed on state assessments as far as what proficient, what percent of students were proficient compared to our similar districts and compared to the state. Now, the similar districts is not something that I came up with or someone in Dublin City Schools came up with. So that is provided by the state of Ohio. So you can see our, our district line or bar on this chart is the one to the left, the darker green. And so you can see that we are above or we're above the state average on all of our state assessments at the elementary level and at or above our similar districts as well. All right. So the next slide that looks at our middle school and a similar graphic that you saw with the elementary. And again, we are seeing above state average for all grade levels and above similar districts in all subjects besides math seven. The next component of the state report card, and I am going to pull up my notes here because this is really complex when we have a year of missing data to help the state determine the progress component. So the progress is looking at students and are they growing from one year to the next? So in a typical consecutive years without a pandemic in the middle, it would be comparing spring 2020 data to spring 2021 data. But because we had a gap year in our state assessments, we are now comparing spring 2019 data to spring 2021 data. So we are looking at how students performed over a two-year gap. You can see for grades four through seven, we are in the green area, which shows that we are growing our students at a higher rate, showing more progress in those areas and those subjects. The eighth grade data I would like to address because I don't want anyone to walk away from this visual thinking our eighth grade teachers are not rock stars because we are all doing really hard work. One, one, one piece that this chart does not show, which this is what's on the state report card, is that although we are red in the ELA for eighth grade, we are starting to get closer to closing that gap in red for English Language Arts for eighth grade. So we hope as a team, as a teaching and learning team, we have dug into this data and we do see growth. Based on this chart, you see red. So know that behind the red, there is growth in English Language Arts. For mathematics, this has been quite the puzzle for our teaching and learning team. But one piece that is so great about Dublin is that we give students options for their math course and so for their math track. So many of our students participate in the Math 7, 8 compact class, which is a very rigorous course. So our students in middle school, we take Math 7, 8, are taking two years of math course in one year. So what we have seen is that this data is comparing those students who were either in sixth or seventh grade last year in the Math 7, 8 track, comparing to how they performed on possibly a grade four math test or a grade five math test because they've been on this accelerated pathway. So digging into this data, these students are achieving, they're doing great on the test, but they may not be growing at the same rate. But if we look, if we think back to last year and what a typical week looked like for our middle school students. and what a typical week looked like for our middle school students, they were seeing teachers face to face about half the time of a normal type, a normal year and covering two years of content. So this is all data that we are looking at as a teaching and learning team. And it's great data for us to reflect on and make sure that as these students have transitioned to algebra, geometry, that we, we're identifying where these students needed some additional support because of the learning mode. One other piece I want to highlight, not that I want to spend too much more time on eighth grade. Because of our tracks in math or our progressions in math, we had about 400 students not take the Math 8 assessment because they weren't either algebra or geometry. And so those data points will show up in this slide. I think the next slide. No, in two slides. So the high school spring 2020 state data comparison is on the screen. So this is a similar chart to what you saw before. These are all the state tested areas from last spring. There is one all the way to the right called the end of course improvement indicator. And this is looking at for all of our students who are retesting for graduation purposes, are they performing at a higher performance level than before? And we are doing very well in that indicator. So we're identifying those students who need to retest and we're providing them appropriate intervention to see their scores increase. We're doing very well in that area. And then here is the progress at the high school level. So it only looks at English Language Arts and Mathematics. English Language Arts 1 is no longer a state tested area. So that's why it's grayed out. The state no longer requires that. A few of the additional report card components that I'm not going to dig in too much tonight is graduation. We have been pretty consistent over the last several years with our graduation component. So our students are still graduating. We have not seen a dip in that whatsoever. The state has increased flexibility for the way students earned graduation, our, their high school diploma, which is great. And starting next year, we'll see even more flexibility with our, with our graduating students. The prepared for success component looks at how students are performing on AP or IB or a college readiness assessment. And this has been really interesting to see our, we saw a slight increase in performance compared to two years ago. We have increased the number of students who have hit the ACT or SAT remediation free scores. We have seen an increase in SAT participation. And we have also seen an increase in college credit plus. So students are gaining more college credit during their high school years. That is a component that we saw an increase. The improving at risk readers, there was a lot of flexibility due to the pandemic in this. But we promoted 99.8% of students, percent of students onto fourth grade. That, that third grade rating guarantee was suspended for the last couple of years due to the pandemic. And then the other component was the gap closing. And this looks at how our subgroups are performing, their performance index. One piece I want to highlight on here is that this does take into account any untested students. So the students who are untested count as a zero into that calculation. So with, I think roughly 1,400 tests uncompleted last year, that does impact our data quite a bit. Some additional instructional data points we look at throughout the year. And I'm not going to go into these. But I do want to highlight, like I said at the start, state report card data really relies heavily on end of year state tests. And we don't wait until the end of the year, until these results to come back to understand where our students are at. So we're constantly trying to understand where our students are at. So these are a couple of our assessments that we give. Some throughout the year, such as math growth, reading and math. Then of course, AP at the end of the year. And then some of our curriculum resources I listed up there as well because we are continuously trying to understand where our students are at so we can better meet their needs throughout the year. This, the next two slides show how our students, our schools. So each one of these dots is one of our elementary or middle schools. And I put this visual up here again because this is our ongoing data. This is our ongoing progress monitoring of our students in our schools. And so this is looking at how our schools are growing students throughout the year. So this visual is looking at how students or schools are growing students in reading. So the horizontal line is looking at, are we growing students at the national average? The national norm? The vertical line is looking at achievement. Are our buildings overall in reading performing higher than the national norm? So what I see from here is that our buildings in reading are doing very well with achievement. Our students are performing above the national average. And many of them are growing at a faster rate than average. So there's, there's always room for growth. And of course, we want to see all of our buildings above that horizontal line. And here is that same visual for math. So we can see many of our buildings up in the right, what we call the right quadrant, which shows that our students are achieving and growing. So again, I show you this just so everyone is aware that we are continuously looking at our data. We'll look at this data again after our winter window to see how we're growing and how well our students are achieving. This is just another data point that projects how our students will perform on the state assessments at the end of the year. It is another data point that we look at throughout the year. What I will say is projections are made based on how students perform in the fall of 2021. So it's looking at one single assessment result for the student. So good or bad testing day, that's where the, the projection is pulled from. So again, we look at this data and we compare it to how the students are performing in the classroom and what we're seeing on other local assessments. And I promise this is my last slide. But this is a slide I'm most excited about because it talks about the instructional supports and all the hard work that's happening this year to, you know, continue growing our buildings, continue making sure, making sure our students continue to grow. There will always be a focus on a balanced assessment approach. So we will continue to look at the state report card and state data. But we will also put a lot of value into what teachers are seeing in the classroom. They are experts, they are rock stars. And so supporting them with understanding how they can continue to learn about their students. We've done some great professional learning days with our instructional coaches, with our principals to dig into this data and understand what does it mean for our students and for our buildings. Dr. Bailey has been working with each of the building principals on their goals. And she spends time every month with each of the buildings, partners monitoring those goals and seeing how she can support them, how our teaching and learning team can support them. So there's a lot of really exciting things going on with the district to continue to, really just to continue this great work. So that was a lot of information. And I know there's a lot of complex, complex changes because of the pandemic, but missing a whole year of missing data. And next year, this report card will look completely different because of the state changing it. So what, any questions or comments?
Hi. And welcome. So it's good to see you in person. One of the best things about this information is that it is used to guide instruction. And I really appreciate and I've heard some good things about Dr. Bailey making contacts at buildings and working with principals. Because what we need this data for is just to improve our instruction and to help the kids. And, and I've gotten quite a number of emails and people asking different questions about the data. And what I see from all the information provided here is it's just like you described, a snapshot of the big picture. But there are so many details that everybody is working on that goes down to individual students, classrooms and on a school-wide basis that people don't see in presentations like this. And, and it is really a lot of work that our staff does, both the administrative staff and the teachers and, and all our support personnel. So thank you for the presentation. And, and I, I wish Dr. Bailey and everyone else working on, on goals for schools, good luck as they work with the students. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just think, two questions here, one more question, one comment. I think it was slide two, the woman with the pie chart. Is it possible to get that updated with the actual percentages instead of just the color coding as well?
Sure, absolutely. I can see that.
Just so you can see what those percentages are. And then looking at the comparisons, obviously you want a little bit of detail on the eighth grade for, I guess it was 2021, spring of 2021. But you're also projecting the spring of 2022. Looks like eighth grade will be another kind of low point. So are there additional services or things we can do now to provide to try to catch those students up in the next three or four months?
So a couple pieces that are going on. One, I would like to highlight one of our new hires, the MTSS coordinator, Brittany Duschler, is, her and I are going around to each of the middle schools and really digging into the data. What does it mean? Where can we provide additional support? That would come from the teaching and learning team as well. So we're spending a lot of thoughtful time with them. I will also be, I think it's this Wednesday, with the middle school lead principals doing a deeper dive into some of the state test results from last year and going all the way down to the level of questions that are being asked on the state test and how they're seeing that in their classrooms as they observe their teachers. So we are digging in at a very, a very deep level. Our math data will give again, our math assessments will give again in January. And so once that window closes, we can see if we're, if we're moving that closer to that 80% proficiency. So there's a lot of progress monitoring. Like I mentioned, Dr. Bailey is going out to the buildings to progress monitor. And we also have the home base piece, which is a great addition to our middle school schedule this year. So two or three days a week, I believe it's three, sorry, is intervention period. And so what Brittany and I are doing with the building teams and with Kristy Vinnie is looking at the data and how are we, you know, extending what's happening in class during that really, that home base time and being thoughtful about what's happening during that intervention period during home base. So I think I provided a lot of different answers, but I hope you know that we're being very intentional with digging into our data. We have other assessments I didn't discuss up here as far as our DRA 3. So there's multiple pieces that are ongoing throughout the year. But there's, there's a lot of support and a lot of progress monitoring going on, which I think is really going to drive those results up. And one other piece I will say about, I hit on it briefly about the, the projections. It is, it's, it's a national research, but it is only looking at one data point. So the students were, if we think about our students, it's been such an interesting time in middle school. So our current eighth graders have really experienced middle school like no other. And so when they started in sixth grade, their year was interrupted. And then last year was, our learning mode was very, not inconsistent, but not, not normal. And so we think about the needs of a middle school student and everything else they're learning about themselves and their social emotional needs. So that's, that's something else I had in here as well is that I, I feel like we have emphasized our social emotional needs, which impact learning these results as well. So Tyler Wolf, the work that Chris is doing with social emotional learning, I think all of that work will, will show a positive impact as we continue to transition our students back to a pretty normal school year. So I'm excited to see what the results look like. But I, I think what's more important is what's happening day to day in our classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
And I know middle year, middle school is tough because there's only three years. And it's a, it's a tough point in every child's life. But it's really good to see that the data translates into interventions. And as a board member, we've all, we've all been kind of wondering how things are looking. And we hear it from parents too. And I hope parents do take the time to pay attention to what's going on and the good work these teams are doing because you're doing amazing work. I can't imagine what you do. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right.
I can use it there.
Thank you.
Good evening. The items I'm asking for approval tonight are one of the same ones I've covered in the presentation. I'll be asking for a resolution to approve Moody Nolan as the firm to provide design services for the Jerome High School and Sayota additions. And their anticipated compensation for these projects is approximately $2.8 million. We'll be asking the board tonight to approve a resolution to approve Ford and Associates as the firm to provide owner representative services for the Jerome High School modulars and the addition project for a fee of approximately $52,000. And lastly, we are asking the board tonight to approve a resolution towards CTO engineering as the firm to provide design services to refurbish the existing building envelope, siding windows and bricks at Kaufman High School for an anticipated compensation of approximately $1 million. $1,500,000. Are there any questions?
Actually, I have a slightly question regarding the resolution for Jerome and Sayota High School addition project for, for them. That won't be paid until we figure out what's going on with Sayota, correct? Will it be like in two separate pieces?
It will be, they'll, they'll bill us at the time. The way, the way the architect invoices come in is they'll always put the different stages. And they'll put this one, is it 60% done or 30% done? So it will get billed as the project goes. But you are correct. So when the Sayota piece comes, it doesn't get charged upfront.
Thank you.
As a, as a person that's been here a long time in the district, I appreciate having seen how long the modulars lasted at Deer Run. I appreciate you putting the removal date on the, on the Jerome modular. So thank you very much for that. Absolutely.
Any other questions? So it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve items 8A, approval of resolution Jerome and Sayota High School additions project. 8B, approval of resolution for Kaufman High School building envelope upgrade project. And 8C, approval of resolution owner representative services for Jerome High School modular classrooms and additions projects. Is there a motion?
So move.
A second.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harris?
I'm in favor of the on-time, under-budget, during the pandemic resolution for Stark and his team. Thank you.
I take that as a yes.
Yeah, that's a yes.
Yeah. Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weingert?
Yes.
And Mrs. May?
Yes, motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
We're going to hold him to that, Stu.
Good evening, Ms. May, members of the board. I'd like to draw your attention to the certified agenda and human resources. We have a recommendation to hire an assistant coordinator of transportation, Richard Blazer. It's an internal promotional opportunity for a classified staff member who will be moving into the role that Brian Killian left, become coordinator of transportation. We also have three retirements on. The first is Susan Collier. She's a math teacher at Grisel. She will have over 29 years when she retires next year. Joyce Nacastro, kindergarten teacher at Deer Run, 22 years in Dublin. And then Robbie Cosby, second grade teacher at Deer Run, 26 years with the district. There are a few supplemental contract changes and a pupil activity supervisor contract, salary change on for your approval. And then there are several seasonal and year-long supplemental and pupil activity supervisor contracts on, again, for your consideration and approval. You'll see athletic event workers on. And then a request to update the salary of middle school athletic workers to mirror the rate that was approved for high school athletic workers previously. Any questions on the certified agenda? Moving on to classified, there are three resignations and two retirements on this board agenda. For retirement, James Moore is a head custodian at Jerome High School. He has 17 years of service in the district. And then Carolyn Slaughter is a bus driver who's going to be retiring with eight years working in Dublin City Schools. We are welcoming a new district custodian to our classified ranks, this agenda. And then there are two unpaid leave of absences on for your approval as well. And then lastly, moving on to stipends, there are just three stipends on tonight. One is for district EL content leads, and the other two are for EL institute work. Any questions on the HR section? Thank you.
It is recommended by the superintendent, the Board of Education, approve items 10A, approval of personnel action items certified, 10B, approval of personnel action items classified, and 10C, approval of stipends. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more comments? Call roll, please.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weineger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Okay, future agenda items, I believe, Mr. Weineger?
Yeah, I just have one quick item here, and it won't take long. As you know, I'm the representative for the school board on the Ohio School Board Association Legislative Committee, and as a member of that committee, what we do is, we have a general meeting during the Capitol Conference, and we vote on proposals, proposed changes to the legislative agenda. And I just wanted to share some of the legislative agenda items, and we don't need to vote on anything, but just to get a consensus of some of the things that are going on would be great. There's a lot of technical language corrections. They always do that when they're, when they're trying to clean up the legislative agenda. And they better identify career and technical language in the curriculum area. They've added some language recognizing gender identity discrimination and wanting to keep safe environments. That doesn't dictate any actions, it's just saying that we want to have safe environments. There's a section in there that they say that they are opposed, and this is just recommending legislation, that's, that's all that this does. They're opposed to the right of first refusal for private schools because, you know, we're focused on public education here. There's some additional categories added on the, in the funding area where they're recommending full funding for ELL and economically disadvantaged students. And then the one big thing, there is an amendment to, to the entire legislative agenda, and that's regarding the Ohio School Board's Executive Committee. The executive committee is the committee that gets together and does all the recommendations and nominates people to be in charge of the school board and does a lot of work for OSBA. And in the representation, the large school districts, the largest school districts in Ohio get some additional representation on that committee. And there's a, an amendment proposal from, and I believe it's Cambridge City Schools, to balance that out so that the rural schools and the, and the larger school districts will have equal representation. And the question is balance. And basically, I think that, that what they're thinking, you know, this is just my estimation of their thinking, is that when you have a lot of representatives, you have more influence in terms of setting the legislative agenda. So we will be voting on that particular amendment. I think it's, in my mind, I think it's a good thing. I don't know how much support it'll have, but if, if we're in consensus, I will support that amendment. If we're not, then I won't.
Does anyone have any comments about that?
Stu, I know you've been involved in the leadership in OSBA. Do you have any thoughts on this particular amendment?
Yes, I have read the amendment. However, I understand what you're talking about. So I think that that would alter some of the dynamics of the OSBA, but there's probably reasons to do that. The, the larger city districts are per capita have more students though. So that would be a vote just for OSBA policy and not to send to the legislature, right?
Correct.
Versus the one, the other language that would be sent to the legislature.
Yes, it's only in terms of the structure of OSBA. It doesn't have anything to do with the recommended legislation. Doesn't have anything to do with what we recommend.
What does Richard Lewis say?
Well, obviously, it hasn't been discussed. It's going to be discussed at the, at the legislative meeting, and I haven't seen a position from him one way or the other.
The only thing that I would be leery of is handing over any, any type of edge we would have with, you know, 16,000 students, because some rural areas, that takes up several counties, and I would just be a little bit concerned with that.
Well, as I said, I, we don't need to vote on it, but if we could get a consensus, I'm okay either way. I'm kind of leaning in favor of it, but if anybody else has thoughts, I, you know, if we can reach a consensus here, I'll go that direction.
Do you have some thoughts on that, Dr. Marshals?
I know in the superintendent's organization that when it's one vote per superintendent, it definitely tilts the lobbying efforts towards the rural districts. And one of the challenges that you have when, if there are 600 superintendents in our organization, and the average school district size in the state of Ohio is under 1,500 kids, that it does tilt, especially lobbying when you look at legislative actions towards those smaller rural districts. And as someone who's the superintendent at East Knox, Knox County as a whole, with all of those districts, gets five votes, but they're a third, they're a third of the students as there are in Dublin total. So I think you, you know, it's, is it representation one vote per district, or is it based on how many kids you serve? So from a selfish standpoint as Dublin, yeah, we should have more votes, because we got more kids, but I'm not a member of the board, so Mrs. May asked me.
Well, because I, I thought you were thinking the same.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking is, yeah, if you're one of the big dogs, you should have more bark in the fight, but that's because we're one of the big dogs.
Does that help you, Rick?
It does. I have a bird from Scott.
I was going to say, first of all, thank you, Rick, for your work in representing us as a board at that meeting. I had not read the proposed changes in detail either, but I'd avoid support, whatever direction you decide on that. And maybe we can talk later in the week after I've had a chance to fully read that before the, that the meeting is on Sunday of the OSBA conference?
It's on Monday.
Monday, okay.
Right, so plenty of time.
All right, thank you.
Well, at least you gave us a heads up, so we can get back to you, so thank you.
Yeah.
Richard, could you send us the, the resolution?
Sure.
And perhaps a whole legislative agenda that's been proposed?
No problem.
I know it's pretty lengthy, because it used to appear in a booklet that...
52 pages.
Yes.
I remember seeing it this year, so thank you.
I suspect they probably send it out electronically now rather than in booklets.
Yes, yes, I didn't get any paper, it's all electronic.
Anything else for future agenda items? Okay, in accordance with the Higher Revised Code 101.22G, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, the Dublin Board of Education will go into executive session to consider being the employment of a public employee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Weineger?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. There will be no votes taken afterwards. Thank you, everybody.